All right, good evening and welcome to the April 28th meeting of the Town Council. If you would kindly rise and join us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tom Koenig is excused from tonight's meeting. Okay, announcements that I have are for our upcoming council meetings on Thursday, May 5th, Thursday, May 26th, Thursday, June 9th, and Thursday, June 23rd are all regular meetings here in the Matthew Thornton Room, beginning at 7:00 PM. Any comments from the press and public? If anybody would like to address the council, you could either come to the mic here or the table. And seeing no one, we'll move on. Paul, did you have any announcements? Sorry, I'm a little rusty here, so I apologize. Paul?
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Jay. Yes, I do, but I was just gonna do them when the Town Manager, but I'll do them now. The National DEA, National Drug Takeback Day will be Saturday, April 30th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. You can drop off your unused expired prescription drugs in a designated bin located in the police lobby in the Police Department. As always, no needles or liquids, please. Firearms Safety Class, Adult Class, will be held in the Merrimack Police Department on Saturday, May 21st, from 9:00 to 11:30 AM. To register, please contact Community Service Officer William Vander Side at 603-420-1842. Our next Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day is Saturday, May 7th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM in Milford at the Public Works Building, 289 South Street in Milford. And I believe the Media Division will be doing a Merrimack Moment, talking about hazardous days and what's accepted and what's not. We should be seeing that in the next few weeks. The Parks and Rec Department is seeking to hire additional staff for the upcoming summer. Open positions include Camp Counselors, Lifeguards, Waterfront Director, Camp Office Secretary, Maintenance, and Weekend Park Attendants. For questions, please contact the Parks and Rec Department at 603-882-1046. To download an application, visit www.merrimacknh, all one word, dot gov forward slash jobs. Finally, the Town of Merrimack is working with New Hampshire Department of Public Health and their partners to host another COVID vaccination clinic on Thursday, May 5th, at the John O'Leary Adult Community Center at Four Church Street here in Merrimack. COVID First, Second Boosters, along with new primary shots, are available for all three types of vaccines. Call the Merrimack Town Hall at 603-420-1440, or email welfare@merrimacknh.gov to schedule your appointment. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, there's no rec- recognitions this evening, so our under appointments, we will have our annual review with the Parks and Rec Committee. Per Town of Merrimack Charter, Article 6, Section 6, at least annually, there should be a review with the Parks and Recreation Committee. The agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns that the council should know about or act upon. And tonight, Tracy McGrath, the Chairman of the Parks and Rec Committee, is with us.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So, of course, Mr. McCallie took care of a lot of stuff that I was gonna talk about tonight for Parks and Recs, so Matt already warned me about that. We're okay. But just to reiterate, we really do need these camp counselors. We're coming up very close to the end of the school year and ready for camp, and we need the extra help down there, which can also segue into one of the biggest things that we've been working on for Parks and Recs, which is the Wasserman Beach Project. Have you been down there to take a look at it yet? That's the best word I could come up with, too. So, half of it's actually done as far as the beach side. Just in the last couple of weeks or so, we started pulling out the docks. We were gonna go ahead and try to reserve some of the docks, see if we could use them as reclaimed wood. No, no, pretty much turned into mush. So, we are pricing some things out. Matt's got some things in the works as far as that goes. I know he's presented it here to the council. We're going to have one dock that's gonna be out into the water that's gonna be primarily used for a fishing dock to, with any luck, keep the hooks and sinkers and everything away from the swimmers. As you know, we also dredged out the beach. We had some EPA things that we had to deal with, with this sand not being able to mix with this sand, and hence the way that we have the layout for the beach. And so, the beach looks really great, doesn't have the muck in it, and where the kids and people are gonna be swimming. But for those who haven't been out there, you have to go down to the beach and you have to take a look. It's absolutely beautiful. Spectacular is a great word for it. We are gonna be working on, as the money allows, we're gonna be working on the other side of the big tree that's there that we weren't allowed to move. And that's gonna also be, I believe they're gonna, we're gonna be putting in some kind of an ADA accessible area so that they can get to the docks and get to the beach from that perspective, 'cause otherwise there's stairs. As far as Parks and Recs dealing with the camp, last, we had a meeting last week, and Matt was full. We are at 100% capacity. We have a waiting list, as a matter of fact. The cost this year for camp in Merrimack only went up $15 a week. The cost went up $40 to $60 per week at other camps all around. So, I think that's why we filled up a little bit faster. We have discussed the possibility, nothing is confirmed, but we have discussed the possibility of having to have a greater increase for next year in order to be able to maybe get in staff a little sooner than last minute. We don't need to stress Matt out. That's, that's our biggest concern on Parks and Recs, is not to stress Matt out, because he's amazing, and we don't want him to go anywhere. So, that's all, that's filled up. Matt held a job fair for Parks and Recs. Got a couple people, both of them backed out. They took other jobs. The biggest problem, of course, we have right now is, is money. People can make their $15 an hour someplace else. He's subsidizing certifications if you come and work for us, so that helps cut down some of the costs of people who are applying for these positions. But we do still need the list, like Mr. McCallie said.
And not to mention, just the plugs there. It's Monday through Friday.
Yes.
So, no weekends, no nights. So, anybody, any teenager that wants a job, that they can be with their friends on weekends and nights, camp counselor is the perfect job for you.
You're talking about guaranteed 40 hours a week here. Exactly. Everybody else is gonna be working, or they're gonna be sleeping during the day. So, you got your job, and then you go home, and you have some fun. Very, very good point there. I know that we submitted a committee report. I know that you've all had a chance to take a look at it, so what I'd like to do is kind of update you on what we've been working on since then. We have summer programs that are gonna be starting up again, including the movie in the park, which will be at Wasserman Park. The schedule has not been set up yet. The movies have not been set up yet, although I think the first one was chosen. Wasn't it Lon at the last meeting? And God help me, I can't remember what it is. Oh, yeah, now I'm testing you. Oh, no, I was talking about the name of the movie. But yeah, I think it's, I think it's about the third week of June. There's also gonna be the concert series in the park. We're still gonna be doing that over here at the gazebo. As far as other things going on in the park, as you know, in the past, we've had the park gardens, and those were handled by the agricultural, exactly, the Agricultural Committee. They have handed that off to Matt, to the Parks and Recs Committee. And so, the DPW is coming out. They're tilling all of the land in that area where we had the, the planting, the plots before. But we're changing the process this year. Before, it was you can sign up for a plot, and then if you wanted a second one, you had to wait a month to give other people a chance. And people were picking plots willy-nilly, wherever they felt like it. Not anymore. Now, we're gonna be, if you, you can sign up for 1, 2, 10, whatever you want. And if you sign up together, you'll, you can get them together if you want. But they're gonna go in order, so that there's not spaces everywhere that are gonna cause some problems. There's a fee of $20 for residents and $25 for non-residents, as far as the plots are concerned. And we've widened the space in between them for a walk space of six feet. Also put in a couple of parking spaces over there. One of them is ADA compliant. So, we have that taken on. One of the things that we were trying to figure out if we could take on was the farmer's market. And we haven't been able to figure out how to do that this year, so we're gonna pass this year and see if we can come up with something for next year that would be useful, beneficial, in a way that it'll be close to the center of town, maybe coincide with some other things, so that there can be extra help with whoever's setting up and so forth. But we have, we have, we have about 10 months to figure that one out for next year. One of the other biggest things that we've been talking about is the, the school owns the property where the skate park is. And the skate park is not in the best condition right now, but we're, we want to either be able to fix it, if we're keeping that area for the skate park, or if not, figure out another location for it. So, we've looked at several different locations. We're still looking at other locations, but as you know, there's, there's not a lot of, of open land in the Town of Merrimack, because I know we've all been begging for extra fields for years, and there's just not a lot of open land. So, we have looked at, actually talked with a couple of police officers on Election Day to ask them their input, too, because we want them to be able to monitor things, just so we don't have too many problems. So, a couple of the ideas that we've come up with was Bishop Field, which is over at the base of the middle school. There's two locations there. One location would be in the front that would be adjacent to Babuza Lake. But that poses an issue with some noise to a couple of the residents. The skate park is not quiet, it's just the way it is. The other option was the other side of the field that's actually there, but that's a field that MYA tends to use when they need extra fields. And we, we don't wanna take away fields. So, that was one option we had. We talked about putting it where the pool used to be, at Wasserman. It's a nice, flat ground. Matt can watch from his office. The police officers that I spoke with at the Election Day said that that was an easy place for them to be able to patrol. The only problem, and, and there's no noise pollution, because there's plenty of trees around, and the closest houses are gonna be at Wasserman Heights. The only problem was is that most people really wanna have the skate park as close to the center of town as possible for the kids to have better access to it. So, we've got great ideas. We're just trying to figure out the best one that suits, fits as many criteria as possible. My understanding is, is that the School Board has not made any decisions, has not made any votes. They're not kicking us out yet, but I know that they want the property back. And we are very, we're very cognizant of their need for having to rearrange some things on their own agenda for property and for buildings. So, we are trying to find that, find that area. One of the things we've been working on recently-
I just wanna make one statement, too.
Oh, I apologize.
My, I think I remember, and maybe some people in the past can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's not only the site, but we can't move what's there. It's immovable. It's, it's not of the construction that you take it apart and move it. We would have to build a brand-new skate area-
Absolutely.
-apparatus. So, that's another dimension of the moving, too. And it's significant, I mean, you're talking like $50,000, I think, something like that, if not more.
I would say, anyway, yeah.
A lot more.
Just to add it to the discussion about moving the park, 'cause it's not just the site, it's the actual apparatus.
I think the intent that we have realized is that, going along with Ms. Harrington's statement there, it is gonna have to be new. What's there right now is not going to withstand, even if we could move it, it's not gonna withstand the move. So, we are gonna have to build something new, and the prices that we're looking at, depending upon the type of, of materials being used, we're looking at $50,000 to $100,000. So, yeah, there's, there's a, there's a lot involved. What was that?
And then site work, and so, yeah. Yeah, well, it was, it was quite an undertaking. I believe it was $125,000 last time we talked, to move it from O'Gara to Bishop anyways, last time we talked about that. That was four or five years ago, so it is, it's not a, let's just pick it up and move it.
Yeah, exactly. And of course, as we all know, right now, the prices are skyrocketing. So, this is probably something that's gonna take a little while to get to, but we're gonna, we're gonna work with the School Board to make sure that everybody's on the same page. The dog park at Wasserman, and the parking lots at Wasserman, I know I'm focusing a lot on Wasserman, but that seems to be where most of our programs really are taking place. DPW has done an amazing job going around the town and working on the various roads that are being repaired, repaved. What they've done, when they've dug up these roads, is they've ground down the, the previous pavement and, and turned it into, what they're telling me is called milling, something that I'm, I'm still learning. They paved it, they, they crushed it down a little bit, and then they turned it into stuff that they could spread out in the parking lot, both on the left over by the Parks and Recs office, as well as over the large parking lot that's for the fields and for the dog park. And it's, it, it looks fantastic. And when it's packed down like it is at the beach parking lot, I think this is gonna be an absolutely amazing area. So, we go to the dog park. We're having a little bit of an issue with that, and so that whoever might be listening tonight, we appreciate your patience. But with the new parking lot that's in, there's rocks that are kind of sliding down the, the pitch. And so, we're trying to keep the area clear until we figure out something that is feasible to make it so that there's no blockage of the gate or creating any kind of a liability for people when they're trying to walk in the gate and slipping and sliding on the hill. We are working on it. We don't wanna have to close the dog park while we're working on it, so we're working fast, and DPW is helping us. They've been absolutely wonderful with all the help they've been giving us from the dog park. I know I'm on a time schedule here, sorry, guys.
Not a problem.
Let's see. Gotten through the docks, summer camp, actually, we're doing really well. So, MYA has, they, they've got all of their programs that are, are in full swing right now. Their current programs are baseball, softball, lacrosse, and soccer. They've got, if I'm doing my math right, about 850 kids that are registered for these various sports for this particular time of year. I, I promised Rick Grenier, who is our representative from MYA, that I would also focus on this a little bit. We need fields. We need to figure some things out with fields, and we are working on that. We actually have two members of our Parks and Recs Committee that are helping Matt at, with looking at various sites around town, looking at them through Town Council, or the Town Office, to see what could be available to help create some more fields. And we've also been very lucky to have businesses that have allowed us to use their property, such as Elbit, and also, I, I hope I'm not butchering this, but Katanga, that's off there off of Continental. It's been wonderful having that kind of access, and the community involvement is priceless. I'll leave anything that came out of Town Council for Lon, or for Mr. Woods to talk about, if there was any. I know that we have a changeover with our School Board Representative. We were not able to speak with that person at the last meeting, but I'm sure that Ms. Rathaus will be at our next Parks and Recs meeting. And she can give us a little bit more of an update on what's going on as far as the schools that we were talking about and how it coincides with the Parks and Recs stuff. We are hoping for, we have a pretty good compliment on our, our Parks and Recs Committee. We are pretty full, but we would like to have, if anyone here is listening from the high school, we would love to have a student rep again. We haven't had one for a year, because our last one graduated, and so we would love to have a student rep to be able to come in and talk with us and help us make some decisions from their perspective and not just ours. We've been working a little bit on talking about changes to the Town Code, the 142 Town Code. We've only been able to agree on three things. One of them is to have a five mile per hour speed limit in everything that's a town park here. It's primarily Wasserman Park, because you're driving into it, and the speeders that come through there, it's, it can be kinda scary. We've actually had to call the police out during an event, because someone decided that they were gonna fly down the hill. We're also, we were talking about some issues with access, but it really just goes back down to, let's just keep it to the five mile per hour speed limit. And then, of course, we have the one issue with other people's household waste, so we've been trying to deal with that to make sure that it doesn't overencumber the Parks and Recs Department's dumpsters and everything. So, we've been trying to deal with people bringing their household waste and asking them very nicely not to do that to our dumpsters. These are just little things that we have to work on in order to make the big things work better for Parks and Recs. The Watson Park is, one of the Eagle Scouts is gonna be putting in another goggleball pit. Apparently, it has become the newest sensation. There's two goggleball pits right now at Wasserman Park. And thanks to, we have both the Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scouts, and also the Girl Scouts. We get a lot of wonderful projects out of them. And they, they love to come down and, and, you know, figure out, they talk with Matt, they walk around, they figure out what we need, and next thing we know, we have it. So, it's been absolutely wonderful with that. But the next goggleball pit's coming into Wasserman Park, or, excuse me, Wat-
Watson.
Thank you. Yes, Wat- Watson Park. And, of course, we have the ice skating and the volleyball, so it's gonna be in a different section of that particular area. And I believe that that covers the majority of what we've been doing with an update from the committee report that I submitted back in January. Do you have any questions?
The Boy Scout actually made his presentation to us after visiting your committee.
Yes, we sent him on his way with a lot of class. We were, we were very excited, and we love the location of it, because the kids can go there right after school, and it's, I mean, it's in fair walking distance. Most middle schoolers aren't gonna come down without mom and dad, anyway, but the high schoolers can come right down the hill.
No, it's wonderful. You guys have been busy, and that's very good. It's an active committee, and I like saying that. But Lon, did you have anything you'd like to offer on your work there?
I believe Tracy's covered the waterfront rather well.
She did do that very well.
As usual.
We love that waterfront right now.
I have to say it. Does anybody have any questions, thoughts? Nope, seeing none. Well, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all that. That was a great report.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, also, for all the support that you've given the Parks and Recs Committee and all of the projects that we've done. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to get where we are without your help, so thank you from all of us. We really appreciate it.
Have a wonderful evening.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All righty, and I like the company, too. Okay, next, on the agenda, the council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance of an equipment reimbursement grant in the amount of $11,715.33, made available through the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for the Merrimack Police Department to be used towards transitioning to a new records management system, pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15. And here this evening, what are you doing, Captain?
What are we doing?
Good evening.
You have a meeting here tonight?
Eric?
Yes.
One sec. So, as the council knows, you approved the records management system going in place. And that's a big undertaking to change over the total record management system at the police station. In addition to just the equipment alone, we had to buy servers, there's a lot of other things. So, the police chief came to me and said, can we apply for this grant, an amount of $11,000, to help us supplant some of the equipment that we do need? And that's what Captain Marquis is here to talk to you about tonight.
Great. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you, appreciate it. So, we'll be moving from, as you said, a new record management system from Microsystems to a new system from CSI Technology Group, which is more modern and efficient. This new system will give officers in the field the ability to scan licenses, registrations, and other information directly into the computer, which then populates electronically to templates for warnings, summonses, motor vehicle, accident paperwork, et cetera. They can then print the paperwork right in the cruiser. So, right now, officers hand-write paperwork or manually enter things into the computer. So, this would be a big upgrade for them, to be able to do it right in the car electronically. So, this also allows us to send accident reports automatically to the state electronically. Currently, the office staff basically mails all this stuff to, to the states. That's a big upgrade as well. To make this work, we need to purchase 11 printers to be installed in the vehicles. This grant covers the cost, which is approximately $10,215, and includes 11 printers, mounting kits, and adapter plates. There is an in-kind match of 25%, which is basically the installation which we would pay for. Additionally, with this grant, it covers the purpose, the purchase of one MDT, which is a mobile data terminal, computer to be installed in our K-9 officer's vehicle, which he currently does not have. The cost of that is $3,499.48. It includes one mobile data terminal, mounting equipment, and installation. So, this is covered by the grant at 50% up to $1,500. So, it would be a maximum of $1,500. So, it would be the printer cost of $10,215, plus the $1,500, which is $11,715.33, and that's what we're asking to be accepted for reimbursement. The purchase has to be made and reimbursed from that point, so.
Great, thank you. Any questions or thoughts?
Make a motion if you'd like.
No, no.
Oh, you have to do it. I'm sorry, it's a public hearing.
Yes, open the public hearing at 7:36, if anybody would like to address the council on this, on this grant. Please step to the mic. Seeing no one. I will close the public hearing, a public hearing at 7:37. And Nancy?
Now, can we go ahead and just make a motion to accept the grant? Okay. I'd like to move to accept the grant from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for equipment reimbursement in the amount of $11,715.33 for the new records management system at the Merrimack Police Department.
Second.
Is that sufficient? And be, and to provide authority for the Town Manager to sign any documentation needed.
In order to perfect this, yeah. Is there a second? I'm sorry, second Barbara? Any further questions, Nancy?
No, I think it's self-explanatory. As you said, we've already got the new record system going in, so it's a wonderful opportunity to help us, so. And installing the necessary equipment in the police vehicles.
I'm assuming our portion of that comes out of just the annual, the current budget.
They have the money in their operating budget.
Perfect.
Great. Everybody all set then? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained, 600. Thanks, Captain. Are you?
Thank you very much.
Chief's coming up next, very good. Next on the agenda, item number two, is public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of an anonymous donation in the amount of $10,200 to the Merrimack Police Department to be used towards a comfort dog program, pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15.
So, the police chief came to me about three months ago to just start discussing a comfort dog for the police department. During the unfortunate events when they were searching for Eli, several other communities had comfort dogs to come in and, and to be there for the gentlemen that were looking and searching and, and things of that sort. And he saw how beneficial it was for his own staff, to his own staff, but other people as well. He approached me saying, if we come up with the money, would you consider a comfort dog for our police department? I said, go ahead and see what you can do. About a couple of weeks ago, he came to me and said, we have the money for the comfort dog. It's something that I would like to bring forward, and he's here tonight to discuss it with the council.
Good evening. As Town Manager McCallie was mentioning, this is a program that was near dear to my heart. Something I've been looking at for a while. And after seeing the interactions we had during the Elijah homicide, and, you know, going on, I think it was day 12 or whatever, you know, to see if the fact of having six dogs come in, and who doesn't like a dog, right? It instantly gives them gratification. But comfort dogs are really great for times during crisis, reducing anxiety during police interactions, where we can actually, you know, help them, you know, ease their anxiety and be able to answer our questions more effectively. They're able to provide comfort for individuals in a needed crisis, community issues, community events. It's a great way to engage with the community. I'm sure most of you have seen comfort dogs out there at one time or another, either on the news or interact with them. It's a great- on the news or interact with them. It's a great community piece. I was able to find an anonymous donor that was willing to donate ten thousand, two hundred dollars for the first year startup costs. The, the costs are outlined in the memo that I provided to you. The only difference is that the place where we're looking at the dog for free might not be available, so we have other options that are affordable that we can probably seek donations from within the community. Merrimack Crime Line is, our nonprofit, has already agreed to accept the donations, similar to what they did when we started our K-9 program with Gunny. I just want to reiterate that the, the comfort dog program is much different than a patrol dog. This dog will be going on calls. The officer will have him in the cruiser, still taking any calls for service. The training is much less, because you're not, it's going to be sending him away to a sixteen week school. It's basically an hour a week, focusing on obedience, and then they do citizen K-9 classes, where you're certified to be a comfort dog. So with that, I'll open up any questions.
So anybody have any questions for Chief? Barbara?
So that was, that was really the one question I had, is when do you actually deploy the dog? But it sounds like whoever is going to be responsible for the dog actually has them in the patrol car while that officer is on duty.
Correct. Based on the size of our department, it's not like we can dedicate a comfort dog to a mental health unit or anything like that. So a lot of communities similar to us will just deploy in the field, which is also very helpful, because if we go to untimely death with these children, where someone might have found the parents deceased, a suicide, we can deploy the dog over there to hopefully, you know, just ease the pain a little bit for them.
And may I have another question?
Absolutely.
And what happens if you need to put someone in the back of the patrol car?
So, good question. As, as outlined in the memo, the, the, the large cost of this is actually the cage in the back. So it's going to be two-thirds kennel and one-third prisoner transport. So basically, it's divided up so the dog can stay in there. And it has more room than the prisoner, which I thought was-
And comfort the criminal.
A good, a good idea. And with that, it also has, you know, the, the fans to keep it cool sometimes, the alerts, alarms, and stuff like that.
Now, the regular, I didn't want to, go ahead, you all said, the regular K-9 that we have, the worker dog, is assigned to one person.
Correct.
Can this dog be with other people? Because it's just, I'm envisioning very laid back and just wanted to hang out.
Yeah, so the Officer Groves will be our handler, so should be primarily responsible. But, you know, most comfort dogs, I know that they just basically wander around the station when they're doing the reports, whatever, or they're dealing with the prisoner, and they'll pop around. And I know sometimes, like, the Manchester Comfort Dog, next thing you know, it'll be on the fourth floor. They don't know how it got there, and so. They're very, you know, friendly animals, and that's the reason why you want that type of animal. So the key to it is getting exposure early on when they're young, eight weeks, and start interacting with them.
Socialize.
Yep. And that's what a lot of the courses will help you with, too.
Know the rules.
What's that?
Get to know the rules.
Exactly.
I think the only thing I would add is, I've also had some experience with them being with victims.
Correct.
And it's, it's, again, just a comfort. It's, it's, it is a diversion a little bit, but it provides comfort during those stressful times for victims.
Absolutely.
Or their families, as you indicated.
Absolutely.
So, on that, you know, one of the things that I was just thinking of, the way this idea came about, a good name for this dog would be Eli. It'd be a good-
What a wonderful idea.
Keep that in mind. I think we are, that's a great idea. I think we're also thinking-
Recommendation.
Engaging the community as well. Maybe get some community buy-in. But I do, no one's made that idea, so I do like that.
Nancy?
Thank you. I just want to say, I think it's a wonderful idea, both for law enforcement and for the community. I, I noticed in the, in the notes, it says something about usually law enforcement is able to access one of these dogs at no charge, but that looks like it may not happen.
So one of the places is, is a place on a range, and you have to be on waitlist, and it doesn't look like we'll make the cut for this year. So we were able to find another possible suitable location to obtain a lab from, and at a, at a minimal cost.
Great, great. Wonderful idea.
And it seems like the annual cost is, the continued cost is about two thousand dollars a year?
Correct, which is, in the grand scheme of things, isn't too much.
Yep.
And hopefully, like I said, with the other K-9 program and Merrimack Crime Line and the great civic groups we have in town here that have always supported us, I'm sure a lot of them will be willing to support us as well.
I was imagining the Fluff and Dry, is that, is that, I think Gunny got Fluff and Dry, wasn't it? Yeah.
I don't think I remember that.
Yeah, he had his nails manicured.
Yeah. Somebody donated that, I remember. I can't remember who did the donation. But anyhow, is there any further conversation? Seeing none? Oh, gosh, I am so sorry. I'm just a little rusty. That's, that's the excuse I'm falling back on tonight. I'll open the public hearing at seven forty-five. If anybody would like to address the council on this, please step to a microphone. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing then at seven forty-six. Thank you, Chief.
Go ahead. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to have a move a motion to accept and expend the anonymous donation in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred dollars to the Merrimack Police Department to be used toward a comfort dog program pursuant to RSA 3195B and Charter Article eight dash fifteen.
That's an efficient use of the language. Heck, motion by Nancy Murphy.
It's creative, it's creative.
And a lot of town managers.
Yeah.
Town manager to send any documentation, needed documentation.
And that, too.
Alright, and Barbara's good with that as well. Alright, would you like to discuss your motion? Or have anything? We're all good?
Awesome idea.
Alright. Yes, Barbara?
If it looks like you're going to have to actually purchase the dog, you might want to do the same presentation to different civic groups in this town?
I've already discussed it with a couple of them, so.
Okay, good. You know who I'm thinking about.
Oh, yeah. The ones that are generally supporting our department so many times.
Yep. Alrighty. No further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstained, it's six zero zero. Don't leave, Chief?
If we could just call Media Assistant Justin, he's going to make a phone call. I have a guest calling.
That's right, yeah, he told me he was coming, yes.
Chief, please give the gratitude of the council to your anonymous donor as far as well.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Very generous donation.
It certainly was.
Chief, what's this guy's name?
Eric.
Eric.
Hey, Eric.
Eric. This gentleman's on vacation, so, but he was gracious enough to take the time with his family to allow us to call him on the phone, so.
Nancy did that one time.
And where, and where is he vacationing?
I didn't get to that, Nancy. He said he's going to be in shorts and t-shirts, so I think he'll probably be someplace warmer.
Warmer than New Hampshire.
See gals that we hear?
Hey, Detective Adams, you are joining the Merrimack Town Council. If you're, if you're ready for the event item. Alright.
Yep.
We can start here in just a second.
Alright.
Thank you.
We good? Good evening, Detective. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good.
So, I am going to pass the baton off to the chief to introduce this topic. It's also a grant that the police department came to me about a year and a half ago, when we were having some issues here in the town of Merrimack with some of the areas with drug problems. And that's when we started up our special investigation unit, and they came to me and said, what about this grant? I said, go ahead. They got the word earlier this year that we were awarded the grant. Basically, it's a three-year grant, from what I understand, at a hundred percent cost, that they'll be covering. So, take away Chief and Detective Adams.
Did you have to read the?
Well, I was, I didn't know, Paul was a little rusty tonight, I think. So, yes. Council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance of a comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse program, COSAP, a grant in the amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars, thirty-four cents, made available through the United States Department of Justice Bureau, Bureau of Justice, assistance to the Merrimack Police Department to be used to form a prevention, enforcement, and treatment program pursuant to Article RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Just a little background, two thousand nineteen, we were approached by the New Hampshire Department-
Did we introduce the detective? I know-
I will. Do you want to do now, or?
I didn't know if you might want to, yeah.
Okay. On the phone, we have Detective, geez, Eric Adams, from Laconia Police Department, and he's going to speak about his program that he developed up there. But just a little background, two thousand nineteen, we were approached by the Department of Justice regarding almost like a collaborative grant with other communities, which included Belmont, Berlin, Claremont, Lundary, and Manchester, to implement a prevention enforcement treatment program, which essentially was a, a three, a year, three-year salary for a patrol officer in town here, to dedicate to this program. And I'd like to turn over to Detective Eric Adams, because he's the one that really developed it in Laconia, and it's a huge success, to the point that, as Fred mentioned, too, we were denied the grant a couple times, so it was a great surprise when they finally accepted the grant. So Detective Adams, if you don't mind, explain your program.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you, guys. Sorry, I couldn't be here in person. But, yeah, so we started the prevention enforcement treatment program back in two thousand and fourteen with, with the intent to try and work on, and work with our most critical individuals that we dealt with on a regular basis, people that were struggling with substance misuse and mental health. And so, basically, we took the position, and the, our chief basically said, just go ahead and kind of try to figure out what we could do as a police department to assist other community organizations, considering that we're usually the ones that are dealing with the people on a regular basis. And so, what we did was, we started by, I started by identifying what community resources that we had, what we needed, and what we could build on to help bridge and build great collaboration with our police department. And so, by doing that, it was able, we were able to actually better assist when we go to overdose calls and/or when you have family members that are calling the police department, and they're saying, hey, you know, I don't know what to do about my, you know, my son or daughter, or, you know, even husband, wife, family member. And so, basically, how it would work in Laconia is, I would actually work with the individual, I would go through, like, an intake process with them, we'd sit down, we'd discuss kind of where they're at. And it's not just about dealing directly with their substitutes, it's dealing with a full wraparound thing. So making sure that we're providing the best support to the individual and, and their family. And so, you're really looking at the whole wraparound service. And so by including other agencies and organizations, so you just take, for instance, so, you know, we sent someone off to a treatment program. Well, that's great, but the, the real challenge is about, what does that look like when they come back to the community? How do we provide those supports to them? And so, it's, it was important for, for us to make sure that we were a part of that, because of the fact that if we didn't try to assist this person in the, in the front part, then how are we going to respond in the, you know, at the back, when we're getting the phone call, to go respond for an overdose, which now more than likely is going to be fatal, because of the fact that they've been sober for a little bit, the, the tolerance level is a lot less. And not only that, you're really helping to kind of build that person along, so that they are a contributing member of society. And so, for this program, we all have, we all get those calls. We all get families that are calling the PD, that are saying, hey, you know, like, I, I don't know what to do, you know, this is, this is getting worse, they're stealing from me. And so it's not just about dealing directly with, you know, the addict. It's, it's, it's the whole premise around it, because of the fact that you have crimes that are being committed that we are dealing with, right? And that, when you're dealing with those crimes, it's a lot of the petty theft crimes, it's a lot of the break-in and entering. It's, it's those types of crimes that are being committed, theft from stores, those types of things. And so, by working with the court system, working with the mental health system, and your own prosecutor, and, and all of it together, you're, you're actually able to try and help someone move forward without, while you're still holding them accountable for, you know, any actions that, that might have happened, you know, prior to them getting the help that they needed. Does that, does anybody have any questions? I know I just threw a lot at you all.
Thank you, Detective.
And I know it's different being on the phone. I don't get to actually talk to you in person.
Does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
No, I think, I'm Councilor Nancy Harrington, by the way. And we want to know where you're vacationing before you hang up. We hear you, we hear you're on vacation, so thank you very much for joining us.
We, we're in Newport Richie. Yeah, my wife has family down here. So, yeah, so we're able to kind of get away for, for a little bit.
Very nice, very nice.
Yeah.
Not that it's any about business, but I thought I-
[laughing]
The chief had mentioned you were on vacation, so I just wanted to make a note of appreciation for you letting us interrupt your vacation. Anyway-
No, no, no. This is important. It, it really is. And I think that your community could definitely benefit from it. You know, I've, I've worked with other communities, and now, this is a great opportunity to actually, for me to be able to devote the time needed to really work with your police department. And if there'll be more meetings like this, we'll, you know, we'll provide updates. That's all part of what this grant is for on my end. My end will be really doing the program directing and the actual direct work. So we'll have meetings, you know, with all of you many times, just to keep you updated. And so, part of it, too, is building up and doing, like, community events. So we're, we're letting the community know, like, what's going on with the police department, and, and how we're, you know, being very transparent about how we want to try to, to work with people in the community to get them the best help that we can. Because really, we're, we are the ones that deal with it, you know, at two o'clock in the morning. And so, having officers, having the ability to have the knowledge that they need to say, hey, look, I don't know what you're going through, but I could tell you there are things out there that, that we can get you connected through to help.
Right. Nancy, did you have-
I particularly like the whole hosting community outreach programs. You know, it wasn't, it really has to do not only with the addictive person and their family, but also the community.
Yes, yeah.
So I particularly appreciated that part of the grant that I looked over, too. So thank you for offering to help. I don't have any particular questions beyond that.
Barbara? Barbara Healy?
Yeah. Hi, this is Councilor Barbara Healy, and actually, I have several questions. Because this, to me, sounds more like a social service position than it does a law and enforcement position. So I guess my questions revolve around, first of all, how does this merge with the task force you already have for drug enforcement here in town? And when, is this a new position? Is it full-time? Is it part-time? And when the grant runs out in three years, how are you going to fit this into your budget for, because obviously, we now have a person in the position?
So inherently, police work now has become social work. I'm sure everyone's cognizant of that fact. So the more training and experience we can get our officers to interact with publics, whether it be, you know, drug-addicted public or mental health issues, is beneficial, because we wear many hats, and we are definitely social workers a lot of the times. It's going to be, but there is also an enforcement piece of this grant. So it's not just a, you know, catch them, let them go. There's still enforcement, there's still consequences. And, you know, our task force, our special investigation unit works with the Hillsborough County Street Crimes Task Force quite a bit. And they'll go hand in hand, because we, we narrate that, we dictate that any overdose, our special investigation unit follows up on it. So it'll be hand in hand, and they'll be, be able to generate information, know who these people are, maybe know where they're hanging out, hopefully to try to connect them with other resources. After year three of the grant, there's no, you know, there's no stipulation where we need to continue the person on. I'm very, very hopeful in Detective Adams' program, that it's going to be a great benefit to the community here. And hopefully, we'll be able to show you the numbers and show you what we've been able to do, and therefore we'll, we'll come before you to make sure we keep this position on, because police work has changed so much in the last several years. And the more training we can do, that would be better. But it eventually will be- better. But it, it eventually will be a full-time position. Detective Adams and I spoke, obviously we're having a staffing issue right now, which is not unlike any other community, that everyone's facing the same thing. It's, and I couldn't pull an officer out of patrol right now. So we discussed that, right now, we're gonna focus more on the education piece, getting our officers trained, more, more officers trained in critical intervention training, and working on that community piece as well. So that way, we don't have to remove a patrol officer from the front lines to put in this position. Hopefully, when we get, we got two potential officers out there, once we get more people all trained up, we'll be able to just actually have a dedicated role. And in talking to Detective Adams, it's definitely gonna be busy enough because I think once we put it out there, people are, be, start reaching out to us. Right now, you know, a lot of people are shameful to talk about drug addicted family members, but hopefully, if we give them the right tools and resources, they'll be able to come before us and get that information, and no longer keep, treat it as a stigma.
Right. Nancy?
Yeah.
Go ahead Detective.
Chief, do you mind if I just add on that?
By all means Detective.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch your name. But I just want to thank you for, for bringing that point up because it does sound like a, a social worker position completely. And so when, when we started the program, that's exactly what we thought. We thought, well, what if we hired a social worker? The disadvantage to, the, so there's a lot of advantages to having a social worker work within the police department, and then there are some disadvantages. And so there's, it's not, I don't want to say disadvantages, barriers is more, and so part of that is the idea of the knowledge that law enforcement has in working out in the community, and there are a lot of, there's some safety measures to it as well. And so for law enforcement, if we were able to, since we already do a lot of social intervention things already, and we, we are, we're mental health workers, we're addiction counselors, we're social workers, we're insurance navigators, like we do, if you think about, there's so many things that law enforcement nowadays is doing. And so we are, for this position, we're able to actually utilize the, the, the position to connect others, but also work within the court system. So like when you have someone that is out on bail, that officer is able to do similar to what a probation pro officer would do. And so sometimes when you are working with someone and they violate a bail condition through the court system, right? Working with that individual, we have to sometimes do what they call a breach of bail. And so you, you end up doing a warrant, arresting them, bringing them back before the court. But the whole process of doing it, you're working with that individual. I've done it now numerous, many, many times. And if you're doing it in a way, instead of being aggressive about it and being, you know, you're, you're a screw-up, you know, and now you're just gonna get locked up, it's not about that. It's about working with that individual and letting them know, hey, look, you know, if nothing else is working, if you're not willing to, to, to get the help you need, or if you want the help, but you just can't get over that hump because you're being, you're around in social circles, and you're surrounding yourself with individuals, there are times that that can be a kind of waiting moment for them. And I've had numerous people tell me that, that I've worked with. And sometimes it's when they understand the severity of what's going on. Because sometimes people don't understand that in law enforcement, we see, we end up arresting the same person over and over and over and over again. And when we are arresting them over and over and over again, they get complacent, and they think that, well, nothing's really gonna happen. But when you start working with them in a, in a more of a non-typical law enforcement way, and you try to understand where they're coming from and why, they keep doing what they're doing, right? It's all about learning about that person. And that's why it's important that having a dedicated person to be able to take the time to do that. And you're also working with the court systems, you're working with the families, you're working, you know, you're providing transportation, you're doing all these types of things. So it is part social worker, and that's very important. But you're also doing all kinds of other things in the interim. And I, that was kind of like a long-winded, so I apologize for that.
No, not at all.
And I hope that answered.
No, that was very helpful. Detective Adams, Nancy Murphy would like to, has a question.
I, I just wanted to say, I sat formerly at, on the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee in the House, and this subject would often come up, that like it or not, law enforcement officers are, social work is part of their job. They're put in positions that we, maybe years ago, they weren't.
Yes.
With mental health, substance abuse for people that are self-medicating because they have mental health issues. I see this as a wonderful opportunity to be proactive and rather than adversarial, to, to develop some relationships for families, for schools. And, and I, I just know that one of the issues that we used to raise at, at the House was there just isn't enough time for training and for law enforcement at the academy. There just, there's so many hours, and there's so many things that we're expecting, or police officers have, have become, put in situations that they're expected to be able to handle, without the training that they need to. So I think it's wonderful that even initially, if people, you know, there's not a designated person, but all, you know, officers have the, the opportunity to do this. I think it's a great idea, and this is, this is a great investment of, of, of time and, and money. And, and I think it's one of those, you know, you pay now or you pay later. And I, and I, I see it as a, as a, as a way to be part of the solution, not just reactionary and, you know, lock them up. And I think we can, we can, we can change things around for, you know, at least a percentage of people that will, so I think it's great.
Thank you Nancy. Barbara Healy again has a further question or comment.
All of that, what she said. But also, you'll have to rethink what your metrics are that for success. Because that's one of the things we'll ask you when the time comes, that now we have to pay for that position. So at least you'll have a few years to figure out how you're going to present that, and how are you going to explain or demonstrate the success of this program.
Absolutely, and I think that's where Detective Adams has the expertise in, and he's been around the block in a very knowledgeableness, and we're definitely gonna lean on him. And we've, he's already had a few, couple meetings with him, and it's proven great, so.
I'm sure he's been asked that question quite a few times.
The, if I could just add, the, the measure of success that, so part of this grant is that we'll be working with, they're called RTI, it's a, an analysis company, and measure, and they do measurables. So that's part of the grant, and it's all covered under the federal side of it. So we actually, I have an, I have a meeting with them in two weeks and to start building and designing how it's gonna be measured.
Okay.
For each community. Yep.
All right. Lon, Lon Woods.
Thank you, Officer from Maconia. My question is, the three hundred and thirty-five thousand something dollars for a three-year grant, at the end of the three years, if the program has been as successful as you anticipate, and I would anticipate it would be, we would then be picking up another hundred grand a year, or?
Yeah, at that time, at this expiration of the grant, I would be coming before you as I usually do during the budget time, and to present it as, as, as keeping the officer on as a prevention enforcement and treatment officer.
Does that translate into an additional officer as well?
Correct, we'll be adding one to the force. So we'll be at forty-five. Thank you.
Thank you Lon. Any further discussion at this point? No, then I'll open the public hearing at eight-ten. If anybody would like to come forward to speak to the council about this grant, please feel free to do so. Good evening Ben.
Ben Niles, Levin Fernwood Drive. I just want to make one point, which is probably part of this program, but I think that it needs to be dealt with quickly and constantly, and that is the fentanyl overdoses that our country is suffering. There's so much fentanyl coming into our country, the last, it says, I heard, there's enough fentanyl that has been seized by DEA and police officials to wipe out our entire population. We are losing a hundred thousand young people, teenagers, college students, people in their twenties, thirties, maybe early forties, a year. In ten years, that's a million of our youth. That is awful for our country. It's a terrible demographic. So part of this program, I believe, is education. And I'm not an authority in this area, but I know that in the past, there's been outreach through the school systems for a campaign that says, just say no, or something like that. And I think that the, the way fentanyl is so deadly, two grains of it will kill you, two grains of it. And the way it's so deadly, we need to make haste to implement this through our school safety officers. They're in the school all day, they're in the hallways, they're in classes changing, you know, and, and near the doors, in the entrance and exit. But during the class time, it's a great time to have a awakening with the students. Because it's not just that it's being used to enhance the thrill of cocaine or heroin, they're putting it into counterfeit drugs like Adderall. And that's a hot stimulant for the young population. And two grains of it in that pill of Adderall, you're gone. There's no coming back. And I think that there should be an urgent emphasis so that we protect and save our youth and our schoolchildren from this deadly drug that is permeating all parts of our country.
Thank you Ben.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Is there anybody further? I see no one coming up to the mics, so I'll close the public hearing at eight-thirteen. Any further discussion, or would somebody like to make a motion? Nancy Murphy?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to accept the comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse program grant in the amount of up to three hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven and thirty-four cents made available through the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance to the Merrimack Police Department to be used to form a prevention enforcement and training, excuse me, and treatment program pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article eight dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Nancy Murphy, seconded by Barbara Healy.
And...
And there's a friendly amendment here?
Yeah.
Yeah. That the town manager can...
Sign in and out documents.
Sign in and out documents.
Second's good with that too.
Yep.
All right. Nancy, would you like to speak further to your motion?
No, I, I, I think it's timely, and I agree with what Mr. Niles said. I think it's, it's been a long time coming, it's a great opportunity for our community, and I thank the detective for, for, you know, attending tonight and, and helping us understand this program. So thank you, and I think it's, it's wonderful.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six-zero-zero. Detective Adams, thank you so very, very much for taking your time this evening and joining us. And I know it's probably more difficult for you on your end, just by phone, but we definitely appreciate it.
That's okay. No, that's okay. Thank you all for, for allowing me to have an opportunity to join in your meeting. And I, I promise you, I will definitely work very hard to make it a successful program for your, for your community.
Great. Nope, we definitely appreciate it.
Continue to enjoy your vacation.
Chief.
Yes, I, I will.
Alrighty.
Thank you Detective, appreciate it. We'll be in touch, looking forward to it.
All right, great. Thank you very much Chief, thank you everyone.
Take care now.
Bye-bye.
May I make just one comment as well?
Oh, abs.
In reading the literature, I noticed that Senator Shaheen has been pivotal in being able to, well, I'll read what was in here. Senator Shaheen successfully procured five hundred and forty-one million dollars from the Department of Justice Anti-Opioid and Substance Abuse Grant Programs through her leadership on the Senate Appropriations Committee. So she's directly responsible for this continuation of this grant, and also, as you mentioned, hopefully to deal with the scourge of the fentanyl that's going on as well, so anti-opioid. So I would just want to publicly thank her for that.
Thank you. Alrighty.
Well, thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah Chief, you're all set. I was just looking to see if you were up for more, but you're not, so.
Take care now. All right, next on the agenda, legislative updates from our state representatives, and I see no one here, but I do have some communication from Representative Maureen Mooney dated April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. She says, greetings, a special thank you to the Senate Transportation Committee for unanimously adopting an amendment to remove the Section Two of House Bill twenty-twenty-two. Section Two would have transferred ownership of Continental Boulevard to Merrimack. This is good news so far. Next step is to the full Senate and a possible House and Senate Committee of Conference after that, more to come. Her second item is House Bill fifteen forty-seven, an act relative to perfluorinated chemical remediation in soil and procedures for certain hazardous waste generators, was given an ought-to-pass recommendation from the Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee. And next, it goes to the full Senate. This bill is the product of an exceptional collaboration among town activists, state legislators, and the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. She says, thank you for all you do, respectfully submitted, Representative Maureen Mooney. Did anybody have anything further from any other legislators? No, all right. Town manager's report.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Just one tonight. Our paving program for the year has begun and is progressing quite quickly. All base and shim paving has been completed. Tomorrow, the crews will be in to raise all sewer water and drainage structures. Once all structures have been raised, continental paving will be backed to place a final coat of pavement on the roads. So we'll be done our pavement for the season by mid-April. All the roads that we had on, on the books to pave this year will be paved by mid-April. Oh, may, mid-May, sorry, May, we're in April, mid-May.
Excellent, thank you Paul. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, consideration of changes, the final reading for consideration of changes to Chapter A one ninety-eight of the Merrimack Town Code. Somebody like to move the consent agenda?
I'd like to move the consent agenda as presented.
Second, second, motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara Healy. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, six-zero-zero. No old business under new business, permitting requirements for craft fairs. Ms. Jody Donahue is requesting definitions and possible exemption for an upcoming craft fair to be held at Merrimack Premium Outlets on Saturday, May seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Good evening. I don't know if the chief turned off that mic, the light should be lit up.
Yep, there it goes.
Perfect.
Good evening. Boy, I'll tell you this, after looking at the subject of what I submitted, it's pretty... it's pretty trivial compared to what you guys are doing here tonight. Substance abuse program, thinking, "Oh, my goodness," but I, I assure you, it's, it's not to a lot of people. It's, it's very meaningful to them. So first off, I want to say, don't hold it against me. I am an alum, Purple Panther. But my husband was a tomahawk, so, so it's nice to be back in Merrimack today. And so with myself and my mother-in-law, Debbie Donahue, she worked for the school system here and for Merrimack for over thirty years. She's unable to be here this evening, but her and I put together craft and artisan shows. So she is a pivotal assistance to our, our business. So I am GNE Events, Great New England Events, and I do business under the Great New England Craft and Artisan Shows. So I travel around New England hosting high-end craft and artisan shows. They're not your flea markets or stuff in Grandma's attic. These are artists. These are handmade products, a hundred percent, by these artists. So I've been doing craft shows at the Merrimack Outlets. Now, this will be the fifth time that we've been there. Every time I'm there, I always call the fire department, make sure we're okay, and I call the health inspector, talk to Aaron, and make sure we're all set, and we're always okay. We have conversations. He may come out and inspect. It just depends on kind of what we have. So I have this show planned on May seventh. Over a thousand postcards have gone out. There, I have almost a thousand people interested on Facebook. A couple of weeks ago, much to my surprise, we, I found out I received an email through the outlets that all of the artists in the show were going to have to complete a Merrimack Town permit for a hawkers permit and pay fifty dollars. So, they were alarmed. I've had six or seven of them back out just because they just don't even want to deal with it. They never have to do this, and this is kind of why they have me. So how it works is I rent the space. I list the, I have a two-million-dollar insurance policy. I list the outlets or the venue of choice as additional insureds of my insurance policy. And then I handle all the liability, getting permits. I'll be honest, I've never had this of any towns in New Hampshire ask for this. If anything, there was a town in Sturbridge, Mass., what they asked for, and I have here prepared, is the permit from me with the permit fee and then a list of any of the vendors and all their contact information. So what happened, you know, as soon as I received this email, I, I contacted the town, and I said, "I'm just curious, what's the purpose? What is the purpose? Because I'd like to fulfill that." And what I was told was, "It's because we need to know about the event. If anything happens, we need to know that it's happening." And I said, "Well, when it, this, you know, with a list of everyone, and I'm the contact, I'm the one renting this retail space at the outlets, and by the way, at the outlets, we're in front of the food court, down the corridor, and in the garden area. We're not even in the parking lot." So I was hoping, and then I, I read further, and I said, "Wait a minute. No wonder why we've never had to submit anything before, because right in here, it says, 'Products made by yourself are exempt. Furthermore, if you're a New Hampshire resident, you're exempt.'" And I'm thinking, "Oh, no wonder why." I said, "But I'm on the agenda. Let me go down, let me talk to everybody and see what's going on, because there's lots of craft fairs that take place in town." In fact, when the Park and Rec's representative that was here mentioning she needed help with Farmer's Market, I went out and talked to her, and she's very happy to call me, because that might be a, a component that I can help her with. I have all the contacts. So I've been doing this for six or seven years, and like I said, I've never had a town come out and ask me. And I'm not saying that is wrong. I'm just saying, these are different than commercial businesses. These are not hawkers going from town to town, selling out of their suitcase. It's an organized craft fair in which I organize, so I don't see why I could not submit the permit, and they're all handmade products. And it is very important to them, because fifty dollars is a lot. When you're doing a painting that takes hours or jewelry, I wore some here, these are all handmade, for my artist and my coat. So I'm very proud of them, and they're very proud of their work, and there's very little profit margin in the products that they're hand making. It's not Tupperware, it's not direct sales, Avon. They're hard-working artisans, and some of it is just a part-time job, but some of it is their livelihood. And so fifty dollars may not sound like a lot, but it is. It really is. So I am asking you for clarification going forward, and also, given the timing, that we were not aware of this, so if this is something that's going to be required, if we could at least get an exemption this time so we can continue with our marketing, because we probably have over a thousand people showing up, and I would not know how to cancel at this point. I had a show a couple of weeks ago at the Hampshire Dome. I run the shows there. We had a hundred and fifty booths, and over a thousand of these were handed out for, for that particular show. So that's kind of my presentation, and I'm welcome to take your questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
It falls underneath ordinance one-eighty, intended vendors. Basically, we have the fifty dollars a day, two-hundred-and-fifty for the year permit. Other communities do charge as well. Bedford, Laconia, Hudson, Nashville, Londonderry, I had them look it up today, and I asked, "What are the exemptions?" And basically, Merrimack's exemptions are any nonprofit, any brick-and-mortar retail location in New Hampshire. Those are our exemptions to our fee of fifty dollars.
Any retail, meaning if they're on...
Any retail, brick-and-mortar, retail location in New Hampshire.
Meaning if the vendor goes to that, they don't...
If the vendor, three-sixty, thirsty moose.
Yeah.
They're brick-and-mortar. They wouldn't have to pay a fee if they wanted to be at...
Send up something in town, okay.
As you all know, this came in effect because of Ribfest.
Right.
And the vendor's down at Ribfest. And then there was a lot of people that were soliciting throughout the town. So at the time, the town council said, "We're going to put this in place." And have them do background checks, have them file for a license with us. Some of these artisans would qualify underneath the state as exempt from the state of having to get a Hawker peddler's license, but our license would be in effect of fifty dollars for them to be in Merrimack, according to our ordinance one-eighty. Doesn't mean that we can't change one-eighty. It's not going to get changed by May seventh. Some of the other things that go on, I have another list here. I didn't, I printed it. Trying to get our... Other communities do have, everyone needs a license, no matter what. We have that exemption of, of brick-and-mortar, or some, some, some businesses are home businesses. The way this came about for us, and we found out about it, is there is a lady who sells jelly who's going to an event at Anheuser-Busch. Anheuser-Busch said, "You need to go to the town." They have a gentleman, similar to Jody, who does their events, gets all the information, and tells the vendors, "You need to go to town to get your permit or license." She came to town, said, "I'm selling jelly, here you go, but by the way, I'm at the outlet mall in a couple of days. Do I need a permit for that, too?" And that's what brought it to our attention. So we didn't know that this was going on for the last five years at the outlet mall. The outlet mall didn't know that we had a permitting process in place either. They now do know that as well. There are businesses that rent out space at the outlet mall that have come to the town to get inspected. There's the Cool Ice, I think, things of that sort, that do come to the town and get a permit from the town and get inspected by our health inspector.
Go ahead. When it came to Ribfest, that's food, there's handling, the health department would go and inspect each and every unit, and there's a cost associated with that, tying up manpower to have to do that. I'm wondering if there... I mean, I get, I get what Ms. Donahue's saying, because it's, there isn't a lot of profit for a lot of these people. I know there's a craft fair at the church over here, and I popped into that on occasion over the years, and...
And that's a nonprofit, so they are exempt.
Well, the crafters aren't necessarily...
But it's a nonprofit event. So it's been exempt.
Okay.
Right, but it's been considered a nonprofit event, and it's been exempt.
So generally, yes, they'll pay for their booth, but the vent, the crafters themselves, and there is a difference between a crafter and artisan, by the way, but the crafters themselves are making profit on those craft fairs. They keep...
What they make.
They retain their revenue, yeah. Can I ask you, Mr. McKelley? So under C, under your, your ordinance right here, under two, it says, "Any person selling at his or her own..." Exemptions. "Any person selling at his or her own property of residence, the product of his or her own labor." Those are exempt.
Sowing it from their own house, meaning that if I own a home in Merrimack, I can sell my own products from my house, and I'll be exempt. I don't need a license.
So that pertains to that.
That pertains to that.
What about operates a permanent business in the state occupies temporary premises? So if, I have twenty-six New Hampshire artisans. I have six coming from Massachusetts and three coming from Maine. If they are, technically, they're preparing these products at their place of business, but selling elsewhere.
Do they have brick-and-mortar?
They do not.
Then they would need a license, according to our, our permit process. If they're selling on brick-and-mort-, if they had a brick-and-mortar shop, then they wouldn't have to... They would still have to file, but they wouldn't have to pay. But since they don't have a brick-and-mortar, the way one-eighty is written, they would have to pay.
So the fifty-dollar fee would cover, because to your point, they're not being inspected.
Well, they are being inspected, because the fire marshal should go out there and inspect the setup of the booths to make sure, for winds and things of that sort. The fire inspector should be out there inspecting. Maybe we don't have to go out with health. Our health officer doesn't have to go out there, but our fire inspector should go out there and inspect.
And that's generally where my, my permit, like Milford, I submit the permit, there is no fee, and the fire department does come out and inspect the morning out, which, quite frankly, I appreciate.
Can I, can I ask about the towns that offer this umbrella permit? Is it their town ordinance, the way their town ordinance is written, that allows them to be able to do that?
In the communities that I talked about, Bedford, Laconia, Hudson, Nashville, and Londonderry, they, they have a, a ordinance about vendors and selling in their towns. I didn't see one, I didn't get one from Milford. Amherst has one, but it looks like it was written back in the nineteen-eighties on a typewriter. So we didn't really look at that. Milford, I didn't know if they had one or not.
Is there anything specific in our ordinance that prohibits us from allowing an umbrella permit? One person receiving a permit and all vendors being able to sell under that permit? Is that a judgment call, or is there something in the ordinance specifically that says?
Just remember, if you do that, you got to do that for every location.
And, and so what's the impact of that? That's exactly what I'm looking for.
Impact could be several hours of individuals having to go and inspect food vendors and tents at big events, at other locations.
For a fifty dollar...
For a fifty-dollar fee, where it might take us, you know, the reason why this was implemented for fifty dollars was we were spending eight hours the day before Ribfest with our fire inspector and two health officers.
And I, I totally get that. I guess, I understand the intent of the ordinance. I'm concerned that we're tying people up with this ordinance, that the intent of the ordinance was, was never to create this situation.
Yeah, I think the intent was there so that, at the corner of Continental and Greeley Street, we didn't have the gentlemen selling the rugs on the corner. We didn't have people in town that the police officers didn't know. We didn't, we didn't, our citizens, by having this intent, was that anybody selling in the town of Merrimack has been vetted. Some of these people are giving out their credit card information and things of that sort, and the intent, I believe, at the time from the council was to have a feeling that these people have been vetted, and they're not criminals, and they're not fly-by-nighters, and they're here, and they've been vetted through a process to make the people of town or whoever are buying the goods and services at the time feel comfortable in, in being able to purchase that. I am not saying that, that you guys cannot make an exception for this one time. Give me a directive to look at Chapter one-eighty once again and bring that forward in the next couple of months to look at it. There are some conflicting statements that, that are in the, the ordinance itself that need to be cleaned up. I'm reading it. But once again, you know, if that's the directive, that's the directive the council would like to take. Just know to put a blanket out there that event organizer can pay fifty dollars. You can get an event that has fifty vendors. You can get an event that has, I don't know how many you have, I'm sorry.
For, for Merrimack here, well, since I'm losing them here by the hour, because they don't want to deal with this, we'll probably end up with about thirty-seven.
Thirty, you know, so even, even if she has forty vendors, you could have some that have seventy-five. You have some other ones that do a one-night stand at a, at a brewery in town, and that's all they do. They come in with their food truck or their X, Y, Z for one night, and they're gone. You know, we have the Corvette show come in, and they fill it out, too. Corvette show, when the Corvette car shows come in and stuff.
And here, this is, this is the name, so that's what people, the Craft, Great New England Craft and Artisan Shows. It's reputable, and people attend our shows because it is reputable. They feel they can trust when their credit card's being used, or they feel they can trust that the product is truly handmade product.
When we have some of these other shows that you're talking about, is it typically a single organizer that takes care of all the insurance and everything, and still these vendors come in and they pay the fifty dollars?
That is correct. That is my understanding, Councilor Hunter.
Thank you.
The dilemma is, is, without going through and modifying the ordinance if that would be necessary, the difficulty is, it gets kind of locked in, in a, in a fashion for other organizations, and... And, and the ordinance actually originated because there were a couple of businesses that didn't like that there were people peddling their stuff on the street, not having to pay property taxes and everything else that went along with it.
But there were food vendors, too, if I remember correctly.
There were some food vendors as well as peddlers.
And, and so, and that's how it came up, and then it just, of course, grew into what the ordinance is today, but that's...
I really am feeling between a rock and a hard place. I really don't think I'm equating this kind of a situation with Ribfest, because it is food and that kind of thing, or peddling on a corner. I mean, it really is, it's at an establishment, you could say, you could say Budweiser an establishment, too. I mean, that could be. I'm trying to think of a way to be able to do it with an exception, but carve it as a very small exception until we review it. Because I don't want all of a sudden saying, "Oh, well, exception was given, therefore, we should be able to do it." I want to be able to have it so specific and so carved out and limited that you're not going to get what you're fearful of.
The only way you're going to be able to do that right now is to do the exception for this event itself.
Just for the...
Of course, that's what would have to happen.
No, just for this event, because you have vendors that are at this location, and they are also selling later on in the summer at another location.
So you're saying, exception just for this one event?
That's if you, that's if, how the council would want to go forward.
Right, but you expressed earlier, your concern that other people were opening up the door, and we might pay for it later.
Yes, yes, if you, if you give a, sorry, Councilor. If you give a blanket, "We're not going to artisans tonight."
Oh, no.
You can't, we can't do that. And I just wanted to get that out there, and I know you weren't thinking that, but I wanted to put it out to the public, so that...
If we were to provide exception and say it's for this one event only,
Right.
that takes care of your concern?
A little bit, a little bit of my concern.
But in the meantime, we, I think you're right. We do have to look at that.
Right, because it does become a precedent in a certain fashion. I mean, it really does, yeah.
And I don't want to, and I want to take care of that concern.
Just one more thing, first, just one thing. I had a gentleman who has a brick-and-mortar, who sells alcohol, who wanted to do an event... I had a gentleman who has a brick and mortar, who sells alcohol, who wanted to do an event last Sunday. That called me and was saying, "Why do I have to get a background check? If I'm a criminal, I would lose my liquor license." I said, "It doesn't matter. You're selling, you're in Merrimack, you don't have to pay the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar yearly fee, but you gotta get the background check on it and do it that way." I do have one question. Do these artisans pay a fee to you to use the booths?
Yes, they do. That helps to cover my insurance, to cover my application site, my website, my staff that will be there.
Okay.
All of the expenses that I have, yep.
Okay.
Nancy.
Thank you. I'd be concerned about carving any exception. I understand that fifty dollars is a lot, but I think a couple of expensive artisan products are probably, you know, you're probably going to make that back. So they're making a profit off of their, their, while they're here. Also, law enforcement, I mean, we, we have a hard time allowing our law enforcement offices to do things because we don't have enough or their time is constrained. And if we don't know who's in our town, I, I'm concerned that we're putting open up a potential, I think we're trying to get control of things. And I, I just, I'm concerned, I mean, I, I, like Jody said, she's making the, the, they're paying you, right? To, 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 yeah, so, I don't know, I don't think it's unreasonable for us, and I'm very concerned about setting a precedent that people then will come before us and say, "But you did whatever." And what's the difference between me selling alcohol or me selling whatever? I live in this town. These people aren't even from our community. So, that's just my, my, my concern. I, I mean, that's, that's a lot of vendors, that's a lot of potential work. And, you know, I mean, maybe this one would be wonderful, but you don't know what's going to happen in the future. And I, then it's after the fact, and then you're reinstituting an ordinance to deal with what you figure out later became problematic. So, I don't know, I, I think the ordinance works, and I, I don't think it's really unreasonable to, to require that. I think that's a protection for the town.
One thing, I think he's chief, John Morelli, when we spoke to him several times with the fire department. Any structure larger than a ten-by-ten-ten requires inspection. Ten-by-ten or less does not, and that's what we have. They use a ten-by-ten. Towns require less than what I require. I require forty pounds of weight on each leg. Regardless of whether it's windy or not, they will put their forty pounds on each leg, or they are not allowed to set up. Additionally, when I look at this, it does say that they would be exempt from the background check, because if you're part of an event and the promoter, applicants who are engaged in the peddler-vendor-hawker activity at an event with approval from the event sponsor, and when said event has obtained all required approvals from the state and town, are exempt from the criminal background check requirement.
Barbara.
Yeah, you know, I've had, gone around with this a few times, especially in regards to food trucks. Because unlike big cities, where food trucks park on the corner, we don't have any corners. So they're usually set up somewhere. But anyways, I've had problems with this section before. I am a contract knitter. I don't, I take contracts, I work out of my own home. Just because they're artisans doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to go to an event and actually sell something. So they may never make their money back. And for me, fifty dollars per crafter, artisan, whatever, per booth can be a little expensive for these people. Because if you think about, some of them are making jams or jellies or soaps. You know, as you get into the more artisan versus, you know, I'm, I'm selling, you know, knicky-nackies that I've made out of seashells. Well, they would consider themselves an artisan as well. But anyways, I think, I would like to see this section changed to reflect more of what we have as an event organization. In other words, there isn't a leader, there is someone who's taking over that responsibility of seeing that there is insurance versus some guy on the corner at Greeley Street selling rugs. I, I think this is a very different type of event. And they're being representative, represented, representative, yeah, I can't speak anymore, by an organization versus just single-handedly setting up by, by themselves. We have had an exception to this before, and I can't remember, it was prior to COVID, and I think it was the first time they did the bacon beer festival. They came in and we actually allowed them to grandfather all of the different booths or offerings under one person. And like, I'm sorry, I can't remember the, the total facts for that particular. But it, that was kind of almost the same kind of deal. But anyways, I think this section needs to be reworked. I think it needs to, you know, I just think it needs to be reworked. And I can see why everybody is nervous about it, but, you know, we, we've had door-to-door salesmen walking around in town lately too. And why aren't they being licensed if that's the case? Because they're selling something too. Anyways, my two sons.
They're supposed to be, and if they get a phone call, if they get a, if the police department gets a phone call, they get sent out there and told them to come to Town Hall if they're selling door-to-door. They're not supposed to.
You know, I think if we have surrounding communities that have figured out how to make this work and made it viable, financially viable for a craft fair to happen within their community, I would hate for Merrimack to be the community that makes it so bureaucratic cumbersome that we can't figure out how to let folks do a craft fair in our town. So I'm in favor of a, a one-time exemption for this specific event. And then I'm also in favor of giving Paul the directive that we need to go take a look at this ordinance and, and figure something out.
I, I do want to say, Laconia specifically states, and I quote, "Anyone who sells or displays anything needs a license." And then it goes on to say, "Craft fair sellers must have an individual permit of fifty dollars each."
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we'll ever be Laconia.
No, I don't think we will be either. I'm just, like, like, you know, I give you all the facts.
I think.
And you make the decision from all the facts.
I think what is also motivating me for this one-time exemption is she's just finding out now.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if it were known ahead of time and you ignored it, or there's been a discussion, she didn't even find out from our own building department. She found out.
That we found out from the.
We found out from a vendor, and trust me.
The person who set Manhizer.
Which, okay, so I think that is motivating me to justify a one-time exemption. Because it's not something that the person who's trying to hold the event is trying to manipulate. It wasn't, there was good intent. You went to the appropriate people that has been done in the past. So I think that's what's motivating me to be able to give a break for this one time.
And there's just not enough time to rework the ordinance between now and a couple of weeks, whatever.
And I think all the concerns expressed are accurate, and there, there's good reason for it. And I think we need to be able to look at that, but we need to address it very specifically. So that there's not this need for an exemption, one time.
Would, would the council be in favor of having Jody Donahue be the sponsor, paying a fee, X fee, and exempting the crafters this one time for this event on May seventh, Mother's Day weekend? And the directive then would be to, for me, to come back with a revised section 180 ordinance in the next couple of weeks for, for review. And this way, at least the fee that Jody would be paying.
Oh, I think, I think she has to pay a fee.
Yes. Would, would, would help offset, because it is a Sunday, which means that my fire inspector is going out there on overtime.
Excuse me, it's a Saturday.
Oh, sorry, Saturday.
I was going to say it's Saturday.
Right.
Oh, I think.
I got my days wrong.
I think that's very reasonable.
Still holds.
Still, still, it's still overtime for my fire inspector or anybody the fire department sends out there unless they're on shift. Would be on overtime to go and inspect.
I think that's very reasonable.
So moved.
Want to hold on that for just a moment?
Oh, I can.
You cannot?
I can.
The, the fee that we're, we're talking about, is it the fifty-dollar permit fee? Is it, are we?
Creating a fee.
Well, we're, I think we're discussing what the fee is.
Thank you. That's up to, because this is an exception. The council can discuss what the fee would be.
Our own rules, we can develop our own.
Could be a hundred, could be a hundred and fifty, could be fifty, could be twenty-five. It's up to, I think, for this exception, this one time. Because I, like, like I did say, I do have to send my fire marshal or my fire inspector out there on overtime. To, even though they're less than ten-by-tens, he still needs to go out there, because if they're running electric cords.
There are no electric.
Nancy.
I was just going to say, then, then what we have is we have taxpayers absorbing the cost of a fire inspector to the benefit of a private entity, where the, I, I would like to know what it would cost the, of the town for overtime for whoever has to go out there. What's the actual cost to, to the, the town?
Tom, can you do that quickly? Figure out what John Maguire.
You're talking, you're talking no more than two hours.
Two hours, four hours, I think it's a three hour, three hour minimum.
Oh, you have to do a minimum three.
For an inspection?
Uh, minimum.
By contract, by contract, you have to.
What is the, what is the detail rate for a fire? I don't know that off the top of my head. Can you go check that out, please, for this year?
Can I ask a question too? Is it, is he inspecting product or is he inspecting structure? Because I could have them set up on Friday afternoon, if that's easier. And then we lower the tents at night, that's usually what we do. We don't put out product. I won't allow product because of liability. I don't want that.
They would have to sign, set up before three o'clock, and I don't.
No, that won't happen?
That won't happen.
The outlets won't allow that.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah.
So Tom is going to check what my fire detail rate is, which would be billing this as a fire detail rate.
Right.
And I, I don't want to give you a number, because the numbers have changed so many times over the year, and it's a three-hour minimum.
Right.
By contract, right? I think that's a reasonable thing. I mean, we're going to have to have it done. And you can maybe, let's say it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Then you can talk to your vendors and say, "Give me five bucks each," or whatever.
Listen to that, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Whatever, you know, I think it's reasonable to at least get reimbursed for whatever the cost is going to be.
Oh, absolutely, and that's usually why the promoter will submit the application with a list of the vendors, is to cover any costs that the town may have.
I think that's reasonable. Yes, I would agree with that as well, since you already have it ready, so. Then maybe, is that, is that an extra copy that you've got?
Um, this would be the original. I just need to write a check with it.
Okay, but I was going to say you could give that as a suggestion.
And I would suggest coming in tomorrow, because I have to sign a permit. And I don't have a permit.
Oh, so she can bring it with her?
She can bring it with her tomorrow.
And you can make a copy of it.
And we can make a copy and I can sign it.
That's okay. I live in Maine, but that's okay.
You can fax it. Where have your mother-in-law stopping?
She is in West Virginia visiting her mother right now. It's school vacation week.
Good for her, absolutely.
As long as I get it by May seventh.
That's right. I'll take care of it, it's fine. So for the Rib Fest, how, the question I would ask there is how many handmade versus commercial vendors do they have? Because there is a difference. Kona Ice, commercial, food trucks, obviously, commercial.
There are some, there are some people that are, are not, this cookie, I think they had a cookie vendor one year. There's a bunch of different people that do go in there that are not a commercial operation. They do have some.
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head, but some of the barbecuers aren't commercial either.
Yeah.
Right.
But they pay their fifty dollars. And you got ones coming up from West Virginia who pay. Because of the prize money involved.
But again, I think part of the equation is they know ahead of time. They know from minute one. And I think that's what's adding onto my dilemma.
One hundred percent. The, the Anheuser-Busch, the individual at Anheuser-Busch, the promoters of Rib Fest, they, they are now doing four or five events. They're doing concerts down there. They are T-shirt salespeople, the whole nine yards. They're all coming in and getting their vendor permits from the town. They know what's going on. Those, those, those vendors, the promoter knows. He's been in town now three years. The first year was a little difficult. The last couple of years have been much better with him. He knows what needs to be done. They come in and they, they, they proceed. And they know, and they give it out. When they send out stuff to vendors, they say, "You need to fill this out."
Yeah, you can.
And the front, and I get it.
That's what's.
That, and, and really, we, we started with the outlet mall, thank you. We started with the outlet mall, we started with the outlet mall because they have changed and put a request in to have some of these events in their parking lots now. So we made sure they knew the rules as well. And they do know the rules, because some of the vendors do come in that sell on the sidewalks. It'd be. Need my calculator. Can't do it in my head anymore. Been out of finance too long. Get a real one.
That's a good excuse.
It'd be a hundred and sixty dollars for three hours.
I'm changing careers.
I think that's reasonable.
Those are overtime wages.
Fully loaded.
Yeah, with workers comp, all that stuff. But, so, I don't know, what's?
I'd like to be able to carve out an exception for this one particular circumstance where the organizing, I'm not sure how you'd recognize her in terms of title, and will be paying for the cost of the fire inspector.
Can, can we say just sponsored by New England? What was?
Great New England Craft and Artisan Shows, yeah.
Hundred and sixty-dollar permit fee.
Hundred and sixty-dollar permit fee.
And all the licensing and all the insurance will be
Correct.
provided to the town by the event sponsor.
That's also true. And allow you the authority to send any documentation necessary.
With the understanding that you'll.
Yeah, I got the, I got that part. Come on back.
If I could make a suggestion there to help, in, in a way to aid with adjusting the 180 provision going forward, perhaps there could be a vendor limit. In other words, if your artisans are handmade and you have less than seventy-five booths, or if you have less than a hundred and fifty, I'm not sure what Rib Fest carries. You couldn't do it by attendance, that would be difficult ahead of time. But perhaps you can look at the event, the size of the event that, that is being offered. And what the event is. Is it commercial versus handmade?
I, yeah, when it, when it gets to that, I think we should look around, see what other communities do, that, you know, if they have any fashion, anything fashioned to accommodate those type of things. So, anyhow, all right, the motion was by Nancy, seconded by Barbara. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? In favor, Nancy? Okay. I appreciate your, all your conversation, I really do.
I agree.
And no abstentions. The vote carries six, zero, to zero.
Oh, you in opposition?
No, I, I'm sure.
Oh, okay.
She hesitates.
No, and it's, it's legitimate, which is why it has to be reworked, there's no doubt. I think Nancy's comments on the, you know, just finding out, and there's no time for us to act in a real concrete way, in, in modifying the ordinance before this is necessary. So that's the reason I, I was on board with it, because I am, I was concerned about anybody coming back in the future saying, "This is what you did here." And so, if we rework it, it should, we'll look into all those things. But anyhow, you can make your connections with Paul and get set up for your event.
I will, thank you, thank you very much.
Wish you well in that endeavor.
It's a good reflection on yourselves, but also, thank you for my name. Because if I cancel an event and people, thousands of people show up, that's not so good for the future of the business either. So, let me give you all a postcard. If you'd like to attend, it is a free entry event.
And so, how long do we think we'll be ready before we take a look at the, the ordinance?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cause I think the, the, the more we can shorten that, the, the less chance we have of somebody else coming and saying, I want an exception as well.
Especially since we're coming into that season.
Yeah.
And for the record, I will present it to them as it was an exception, that there was a permit fee, there was a permit that needed to be, um, submitted. And I will cover the hundred percent of the expense, they don't need to know how much, they don't need to know, but from, from a vendor perspective and the artisans, they will know that the.
That it's, right, right, it wasn't an exception at fault, that there was still part of the revenue.
So that might help you in the future as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
I feel like I should apologize to Paul. But, uh, but that's why I asked the question, cause I didn't wanna open the Pandora's box and put us in a position where we would have the difficulties of someone coming in.
No, and, and, and I understand.
The circumstances are very unique.
Right.
And someone would have to meet those exact circum, same circumstances to expect an exception.
And, and to answer Councilor Hunter's question, I kinda had a feeling that you'd be giving me the directive. So you might see, uh, the first reading of the new chapter one eighty next week.
He already started working on it.
Yeah, I just have to see.
He's learning to read us really well.
I just need to see if I can intertwine some of the conversations that we had tonight.
Well, that's why I, I think that's important, so I didn't know if somebody.
I.
Throwing those food trucks.
Might sit down with you or?
I, I, like I said, I. We knew this was coming a week and a half ago and I started the wheels turning to get some information. So hopefully, if I can get everything done, you should see something next week, if not, it'll start on the twenty-sixth of May and go through June.
Very good.
But it isn't gonna be months out. You'll see, see it in the next week to three weeks.
Okay. Great. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, next item, under new business, the council considered the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of five hundred and ten dollars from the trustee of the trust funds to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used towards the camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B, Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen.
Okay. All right, um, real quick, the reason why it's coming from the trustee of trust funds is because if you remember, the Christensen's, the Bear Christensen Fund usually gave a donation directly to Matt, then came in and then he had to accept it. But since they have the money now, the trustee of trust funds, Matt asked them for a couple of camp scholarships. This is the amount of five hundred and ten dollars to pay for a couple camp scholarships.
Okay. It's, it's for a couple of scholarships, the five hundred and ten, or is it for a scholarship? I was just curious.
I think he.
He didn't say?
Uh, he didn't say, it's, it's, uh.
It might be a couple, I, uh.
I wanna, yeah. I saw the Lions Club one. Uh, yeah, he said the same one at my mall twice. Five hundred and ten dollars will pay for.
Do you need your calculator?
Probably a couple, three weeks. Three weeks or so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for, for somebody to come to camp. So basically, the two scholarship together will pay for maybe one or two people to go to camp all summer.
Excellent, great. Um, did you have your hand, Lon, did you?
Do you want two motions or just one?
Well, you have, yeah, cause it's two separate things.
Two separate things.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we'll start with this one first. If somebody would like to remove it.
I move that the town council accept and expend the donation in the amount of five hundred and ten dollars from the trustee of the trust funds to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used towards the camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash small b and Charter Article Eight dash fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by a motion by Lon Woods, seconded by Barbara Haley. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero. Uh, next item is the council is to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of five hundred and ten dollars for the RAC Lions Club to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used towards the camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen.
So moved.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara Haley. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero. And with a thank you to, go ahead, to the Lions Club and I guess to the trustees of the trust funds or the bearers.
I really, just reading that again, I hate to do this because I know we all voted and it's all clean. Trustee of trust funds cannot give a donation. We'd have to request the money from the Bear Christensen Fund for two ca- sorry, the trustee of trust funds cannot give a donation. We, basically what we're doing is we're requesting the money from the trustee of trust funds to pay for five hundred and ten dollars from the Bear Christensen Fund. So what I would need to do, you have to reconsider the motion that was just passed, the one before. And the new motion would be to request five hundred and ten dollars from the trustee of trust funds, from the Bear Christensen Fund, to pay for camp scholarship.
Okay, so in a reconsideration, we moved to reconsider, we voted, yes, on reconsideration, do we? Then do we re?
Then you re, we'll redo the motion, redo the motion.
Okay. So, move to reconsider item, item number two under new business, accepting a donation to the Park and Recs Department.
I second.
Motion by Andy Hunter, seconded by Nancy Harrington.
So now we have to vote.
Now we'll vote on that, um, all those in favor of reconsideration, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero. Somebody like to make a request of the, uh.
Can you?
Care Chris? I, I can, I can restate a motion for you.
Thank you.
Um, to request five hundred and ten dollars from the trustee of trust funds, from the Bear Christensen Trust Fund to allow for a scholarship to Natticoke Summer Day Camp. Pursuant to RSA thirty-one.
So moved. Okay, should we call it to, in here, it's saying to the camp scholarship fund, I don't know if that was specific or?
It's for the camp, it's for the camp.
Okay, so the Natticoke, that's all good.
Natticoke Day Camp, yes, it's our day camp.
Okay. Lon, Lon made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Barbara Haley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero. Thank you. Yes.
Unfortunately, he didn't catch.
Yes, next item on the agenda is a discussion about when and where a retreat slash goal section will be held in time of day, so is, I don't know if anybody's put any thought into that?
I'd like to push it to June if possible.
Do you want, okay, yeah.
Cause in the past, I think it had to be June.
We, we have done a couple in June, but May, May is too tight to get information.
Cause you're moving Co- Fast and Furious.
And it can be any day but Monday?
I would, I would recommend if we, if we're gonna use our, our normal place, Mondays, they, they have to charge us because they don't have staff in there to clean on Mondays, but every other day, they have staff in there, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. They'll have staff in there. So.
So early June.
Early June would work.
I'm sort of, people who work. What's your pleasure, are you, we have, I'm a little flexible, so.
I'm flexible, so.
I would just ask that we not do it on a Friday, just because I have two commissions that meet. And I, I'm not sure, it's the first and the third, or the second and the fourth.
I'm with Nancy, hundred percent.
Okay.
Only because I don't want her to take her Friday, I'm, I'm concerned about her.
June first or second?
How about eighth or ninth?
Or eighth or ninth? I'm okay with any one of those.
I, I vote for the ninth.
Sounds good to me.
You have a town council meeting that night.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
That's a long day to.
So then it would be the sixteenth?
It was usually a little brain dead at that time.
Yes, eighth or the sixteenth.
That's getting kinda late, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, we've done, we've done them that before.
In August.
The ninth.
Ninth and the twenty-third.
Yeah.
We could also have it the eighth.
Could do the eighth, could do it the eighth.
How's the eighth for you?
I'm, I'm fine, I mean, not far out, I just put it on my calendar, I'll, I'll take the day off, so, um, that works for me as well.
I like the idea of the eighth.
Works for me.
Planning board the night before, thank you very much.
I appreciate you doing the planning board.
Hey, wait a sec, by then, you might not be the one going to the planning board.
You may be right.
You could, you could run away.
I don't think there's a lineup for anybody.
Did you notice how Tom changed reorganization from tonight? Cause he knew if you weren't here, that's when the planning board becomes yours and. You're not here to defend yourself, so.
That's right.
That's a veteran move right there.
So, all right, I got June eighth, that works for me, if it works for everybody else. Um, topics would be greatly appreciated by.
You wanna send the list out?
Exactly.
I could send last, last year's list, but.
Perfect.
Um, by the thirteenth. That's why it gives me a couple of weeks to work on this stuff.
So why don't you send out an email to all of us with the attachment of last year's agenda and put every boundary, you need the date by such and such.
Thirteenth, okay, could do that.
Thank you.
Excellent, that works for everybody. You all set, Lon?
Starting out at nine, right?
Yes, nine o'clock is when.
You know, what I'm gonna try to do is, I'm, because we're out of COVID, I'm gonna try to get Primex back in here to facilitate for us.
Perfect.
I think that works a little bit better than somebody having to take the notes and participate in the meeting, it's a little tough.
I do, yeah, I agree.
They're lousy note takers.
They are, but, you know, Lucy gets us moving and keeps us moving through, through the agenda as much as possible.
Yeah. Right, I, I think it's best that way because everybody's a participant and.
Yeah, I agree.
So, and it's free, right?
Yeah, it's part of our, it's part of our.
And they'll bring us new pants.
I know, I love that.
That's it, all right. We'll move on, item number five under new business, uh, council, uh, looking to have the council request the trustee of the trust funds to begin the process of filling their alternate position. That was passed at this last town meeting and, uh, and that's the, the way, the procedure that has to be followed, so, uh, uh, we need a motion for that, Paul?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would hope that the town council would pass a motion to say that, um, uh, the town council requests the trustee of trust funds to fill, fill the alternate position, member positions effective July first, um, utilizing the, um, town's policy for appointments to committees.
So moved.
Nicely said. I'll second that.
Motion by Andy and seconded by Nancy.
When it's so well said, you just.
Had no sense in reinventing the wheel. Andy, did you, would you like to speak to your motion? I think it's a great idea and I'm glad to be part of this plan. Excellent. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero.
And we will let the, um, trustee of trust funds know that they should begin that process.
Very good, thank you, Paul. The next on the agenda is minutes, approval of the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two minutes. Anybody scrutinize, any motion?
I was, uh. I was excused. I had brain illness.
Uh, Barbara?
Yeah, on, um, we need to move to accept the minutes of whatever that day was.
April fourteenth.
Thank you, April fourteenth with the following correction.
Yes.
Want a second?
Second.
Thank you. First correction is on page three, line thirty-eight. Regarding this purchase and, it should read is in agreement.
What line was that, I'm sorry, Barbara?
Line thirty-eight.
Yep.
Just add an in after the is, so it reads is in agreement.
Yep.
And then on page six, line five, um, the word reconsideration is underlined, is that correct?
I don't know why it's on the, uh.
That, I didn't either, so. And that's all I had, other than, um, we may wanna talk about the section, line twenty-one, after we finish with the minutes. Thank you.
Any further changes, adjustments, seeing none, call the question, all those, do we? Who made the motion, uh, bail me out?
I motion, she'd been at the motion, he seconded.
Andy did?
No, I seconded.
Yes, he seconded. Yeah, thank you, all right. All those in favor of the changes, the minutes with changes, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained. Five, zero, one with Nancy Harrington in the abstention. All right, uh, comments from the press republic? I was hoping you had something to say after sitting there for so long.
I enjoy these meetings. Ben Niles, Leavenford, We're Drive. I wanted to, uh, have a brief discussion around Article Three, the three million dollar funding for drainage road repairs in Woodland Park that was sadly defeated by the voters. But, um, and I live in Woodland Park and I didn't even realize that that was going on till I got my voting material. Um, so no one, the fifteen petitioners, none of them either knew me well enough or didn't knock on my door when I was home. So I could sign the petition. I was a little bit disappointed to learn that there was none support from town council. That there was three nays and four abstentions. And Finley, maybe you can enlighten me a little bit as to why the position of town council was so indifferent or against this proposal?
I, I'll, I'll, I'll address it, this is actually just for your comments, but, um, um, and I'm not addressing it for my fellow counselors, for me, we, we have an, an organized plan. It might not seem so, but we have, uh, capital reserve funds, we have, uh, capital improvement program and we work to try and in concert make things advance in a, in a way that has as least impact to the tax rate as we can, and it's just, it's a balancing, i- i- if you will. Um, and so for me, I didn't, I didn't wanna put a recommendation on it, cause I wanted it to stand on its own, but we were told we had to. And so that's the reason, uh, that there were four abstentions, I think, for that reason. So there's, there's actual plan? To address roadways, including Woodland Park? Yeah, yes. Because, uh, uh, the concerns I have, I've seen firsthand. I called the highway department last fall because Timber Lane, which is my, my street butts into it, there was three big potholes, one deep, they fixed two, they ignored the third. Of course, now, we've been through the winter, it's same old, same old. And, um, so, uh, that needs work. There's a few other streets where I think when the, a long time ago, when a road was put in, then it was resurfaced. So there's like two layers of road. So the first layer erodes and then the bottom layer, which is actually thicker, breaks up and crumbles and, of course, with all the water and everything, gets just destroyed. So there's areas in some of the streets, Woodland Drive is in pretty good shape, but there's areas in some of the streets, I know there's some in forest, timber, um, a spot in Fernwood, and, um, uh, so I plan on working with the highway department to, uh, encourage them to address the needs. The other thing I've noticed too is, there's a lot of cracks in the roads. And cracks only grow. And, and the problem with that is that moisture gets in there.
And, and the problem with that is that moisture gets in there, and undermines the pavement, and it sets the position for the next area of deterioration. And I've never seen them crack fill in our neighborhood, but I'm going to ask them and encourage them to do so because that will buy some time and lengthen the, um, durability of the road before it needs major repairs or repaving on it. Where my driveway dead ends at Fernwood, my driveway's sinking down. And every year, with the winter, when the snow melts or the slush, I have a puddle that, at the end of my driveway, that is three, four feet into my driveway, the whole width of my driveway, and out a foot or two into the roadway. And now, there's all cracks there. And the problem with that is, that's the road where the sewer line runs down it. So where it's cracking my driveway is three, four feet from the manhole cover of the sewer. So what's that gonna become? And then we experienced this winter where Fernwood, not Fernwood, um, Forest abuts Joppa. There is two drains that are clogged. Now, I don't know if they're, if they need, uh, clearing and, uh, vacuuming or pumping out. They're like a sit basin or something. But, um, they're totally covered in leaves. And when there was water this deep, you know, it couldn't get through to the drain on it. And, uh, there was days when I had to avoid it because when it was cold and the water froze, it was all a sheet of ice.
Right.
And that's dangerous. So, um, uh, that's another area that needs addressing. And there's, there's two of these drains that are totally clogged with leaves, and who knows what the basin underneath it is, is that clogged? I don't know. So, um, I'm gonna ask them to address those. But, um, there, there's a need, and, um, I'll sit down with, um, Lori Barrett Burnett at the highway department and, uh, see if, uh, she can't help, uh, address the serious deteriorations in some of the roads.
Okay. Andy, if you could all, just a moment. Paul?
Uh, if you send me your concerns, I will make sure that they go to the proper person. While Lori's in charge of highway, the person in charge of the project sits in DPW administration, and I'll make sure they are aware of that.
Person in charge of, I didn't hear you, Paul.
I'm sorry. Um, the person in charge of the project in that area sits in DPW administration. So if you send me a list of, of the concerns, Ben, I will make sure that they, uh, at least we'll look at it, and, and we can coordinate through DPW admin and the DPW director. Can coordinate the projects through the proper channels.
Andy?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll send an email, and I'll, I'll probably attach some photos to it if you don't mind.
Whatever you gotta do.
That will, uh, make it more clear.
Yep.
Now, we know the area is in rough shape. We understand.
And, and, and that's just. And it's not every road or the entirety of a road. It's, there's spots.
Right. And we've heard there's like, um, I can't remember, Lake, there's a name for the gentleman who used to own the home, like something, but.
And, and so I just wanted to provide a little bit of background on, you know, you talked about the vote, and some people abstained, and, and some people, some counselors voted no. Absolutely right. We didn't want to put a recommendation. The state said we had to put a recommendation on there. I know for me personally, my vote initially was I abstained because I didn't want to make a recommendation. But as I, I, I thought about that, I said I needed to lead by example. And what I've been saying all along is, the thing I like about this council is they're financially disciplined, and they pay as they go. Very few proj- projects do they go out and borrow money for. They save up for it, and they pay as they go. Why would I then say I'm gonna abstain, abstain from this and potentially let the town go out and borrow money when the whole time I've been saying we shouldn't be doing that? We should be paying as we go, and we should follow what the council's been doing for years. The minute you lose that financial discipline, then it's gone. And it's easier to borrow money for the next project, and it's easier to borrow money for the project after that. So the capital reserve plan does, I think, if you remember right, three hundred and seventy-five K a year for the next five years for this area. Probably isn't gonna be enough, and maybe that's something we need to look at in the future. But I would rather take care of this project on the same philosophy, pay as you go versus going out and borrow money. That's why I personally voted no recommendation.
Understand that. Barbara?
Also, there was another problem. Um, when you look at the area as a whole, and that's not what this petition did. It only looked at certain streets. But there's a whole issue down there, up there, over there, that where do you drain it to?
Right.
And it's going to take a really good engineering study to determine how that's going to work for the entire area,
Yeah, what comp.
Not just a couple of streets.
With comp cases, you look at Forest, and all the backyards of Forest go into the hill.
Right.
That is, um, the op- the opposite side, or the backside of Indian Rock condo development.
Right.
And so all the water comes down there. And, um, there have been some improvements made because when I, I've, I've been in town for thirty-nine years, and when I moved in, my sump pump ran every spring.
Really?
Every spring. And when we had bad rains, it would run three, four, five days straight. Fifty, fifty minutes on, ten minutes off. It was insane. And I actually had a second pump that I would use out of the same sump pump hole to try and take the pressure off the main pump. They put a drainage system, I think, in Woodland Park, and since that went in, uh, Woodland Drive, I mean, since I, that went in, my sump pump hasn't run in seven or eight years. So drainage is important, but I have people that are two blocks, uh, two, three houses from me, and they happen to back up to the hillside there, and of course, the water all goes downhill. So they're, they need their sump pumps every year for, uh, part of the, uh, you know, winter, spring on it. So it's, um, the other thing is, in Woodland Park, you have little tiny streams that run through. So I talked to a neighbor across the street, two houses down, and he's got a stream that, uh, filters, you know, by his house. And, uh, underground stream, underground. You don't even see it. And that, that drives the sump pump. And it turned out, I, when I first moved in my house, I had that kind of a stream between me and the guy next door to me on it. And that added to my woes. Um, so there is, there is, um, uh, some water issues there. It affects some houses sizably versus, like, my house now is, is high, high and dry. It's fine. But, um, um, I will, uh, Paul, I will get you some information.
Yeah, please do.
And some photos, and then we'll sit down with it. And the other thing is, when they, when they put the patch on, they need to use a, uh, I don't know what you call it, but pneumatic, uh, like hammer, you know, the, the, the things to pack it down. Because to just tamp it down by hand doesn't cut it. And, um.
We actually have a method that we, uh, I don't remember what they call it.
Well, no, when they, what are you saying, when the?
See, a pothole is not big enough to bring a steamroller.
When they fill in the pothole, they're, they're just, or running over it with the truck. What he's saying is, we need to get the roller out there with the vibration to get it down and in there.
Well, or they have, they have these pneumatic.
Yeah, jumpers, jumpers.
Pneumatic plates that are used to pack down in a good manner. And so there may need to be a change there because just to step on it or drive over it, that's gonna last six months to a year, and then you're back there doing it again, which is why potholes become so expensive in our town. Yeah, so. Okay, so I, I don't want to take any more of your time. I appreciate you listening to me, and thank you for your suggestion, Paul.
Just get it to me.
And give me a, a week or so, and I'll, I'll get you some information to try and move forward with it. I'd be happy to talk with or meet with any of the folks from highway, um, if they have any questions or anything.
We'll get you the right people.
Yeah, good. Thank you very much.
Hearing no other comments, I make a motion adjourned. Thank you very much.